Councilmember Pappen.
Drama, yes, here.
Councilmember Aliva.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Snyder. Vice Mayor Snyder.
You're muted, Anne.
Sorry about that present.
Thank you. Vice, I'm sorry, Mayor Halliburton.
Present.
Councilmembers are present.
All right, thank you. Will you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, can we start with the agenda overview, please? Mr. Williams.
Yes, sorry about that, Mr. Mayor is looking for the agenda. So we have our standard reports of bills and claims on the agenda this evening. We thought we would sneak that in on this special agenda. Moving to the after that, we have a public comment that's any member of the public can address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Then we have item number two under new business, which is to consider of appeal of the city's determination of a planning application incompleteness for the 1100 El Camino Real Residential Project. And then we have item number three, which is discussion and appointments of the city selection committee, the vacant positions on regional boards, commissions, and agencies. And then we have council comments, Mr. Mayor, and that concludes the agenda for this evening.
Okay, thank you. I would like to recommend that we take item three off the agenda tonight since we've not received the letters of interest from around the county for various boards typically. Those are due tomorrow. Typically for the December City Selection Committee meeting, the incoming mayor votes on behalf of the city and other members of the council can contact the incoming mayor privately to if they have any opinions on any of the various positions.
Mr. Mayor.
Have any applications in front of us, I think we should bypass that this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to disagree. The A-Bag positions are up there. They're extremely important and we've been approached. We do have an idea of who the candidates are that we can discuss in an open forum. I think it's way too important. We're losing our representation. Councilmember Lee not will no longer be with us. I think we do need to discuss that. There are four candidates at this point in time, we all know.
I'm not aware of any of the candidates.
Happy to discuss them.
Are not due until tomorrow, so it could be others.
But I do think it's important, so I would like us to keep it.
I don't think it would hurt if we heard what Councilmember Pappen knows that I might not know.
Well, for A-Bag, there are four candidates. Giselle from Redwood City, Mark from South City, Rick from San Mateo, and also Carlos from East Palo Alto. So those are four candidates.
All right, sure, we can we can discuss that at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have not seen any of the applications. Okay. Next, we will go to, oh, do we need to have a report out from the December 3, 2020 closed session, Mr. Conran?
Yes, councilman in closed session to discuss a matter of threatened litigation. There are no reportable result from that session. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public communication. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any items that are not on this evening's agenda. Again, not on this evening's agenda. Speakers will have up to three minutes. If you'd like to speak, use the raised hand feature if you're calling in. There the instructions are on the agenda on the city website. I believe it's star nine to call in. Again, if you would like to speak on the Anton Development Project or the City Selection Committee, now is not the time for that. This is only for items not on this evening's agenda. So with that, if there are any members of the public, please use the raised hand feature for general public comment. Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. So we will now go on to item number two. This is the appeal of the city's determination of planning application incompleteness for the 1100 El Camino Real Residential Development Project. Do we have a presentation on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening to you, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. I would just like to now refer this item over to our city attorney, Mr. Michael Conran.
Thank you, Tom. Just before we start, since this is a hearing, we do need each of the members of the city council to disclose any ex-party communications, any communications outside the outside this hearing room. So if you would please now take time to do that, obviously, we met in closed session before this meeting. You don't need to disclose that. But any other conversations you've had with representatives of the developer or other members of the public regarding this matter or project.
Okay, any declarations from the council? Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I had a half an hour discussion with Anton's developer representative. Basically, it was informational. Didn't make many comments, so.
Okay, let's see. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Hi, as reported before or at our study session in September, I had a long teleconference with many of the principals from Anton back in August. And then I had another phone conversation with Carrie Williams again in August or early September. The only communications and that was to talk about the project on that and what I would like to see in the project. The only other was just some emails and a request for a meeting this week, which I did not attend. So I haven't had any further contact.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Aliva?
Yes, I've had a few conversations with representatives from Anton's over the phone. Of course, we zoom in a couple times here. And I had an in-person with city manager Tom Williams about a month ago with a few members of the team.
Okay, so Councilman Pappen?
I've just had some meetings with staff, nothing outside.
Okay, and I had a meeting with Carrie Williams, a consultant for Anton in May. And then I met with her and also another consultant, Don Cecil, probably about two years ago, I think. It was January or February of 2019, I believe. But yeah, probably close to two years ago.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I didn't think we were going back that far.
I don't know.
Yes. The last time we spoke about this, but nothing since then. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappen, because I didn't know how far we're going back to. I'm talking.
Okay, within the past year, I've had one meeting with Carrie Williams in in May. Okay. All right, Mr. Williams, would you like to continue? Or Mr. Conran?
Yeah, our city attorney, Mike Conran.
I think at this point, we'll get a presentation from staff regarding this project. I just want to know that, you know, the city in terms of housing has has been very progressive in terms of actions it's taken in the past. It adopted a specific plan around the Bart Caltrain Intermodal Station before that station was even opened. It has revised that plan and approved two major transit oriented development projects, one of which is well underway. It's also approved a number of other housing projects along El Camino and Broadway. You know, based on existing general plan and zoning ordinance, so do want to make sure the city's record in terms of supporting housing has been very strong. With that, I'll turn it over to community director Darcy Smith.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Darcy Smith. I'm the City of Millbrae Community Development Director. And this presentation is for the item before you tonight, the appeal of the city's determination of planning application incompleteness for the 1100 El Camino Real Residential Development Project. And also available tonight as part of the city team working on this is Roscoe Maida, Planning Manager and the City Attorney and City Manager. The meeting agenda for tonight will start with the staff presentation, then the mayor will open the public hearing and we will have the appellant's oral presentation. Then after that, if necessary, the staff will provide a response. We'll have the public comment period followed by a brief response by the appellant to public comments if desired. Then the honorable mayor will close the public hearing and return for city council deliberation and action. I'll quickly give you a procedural summary to start with, followed by some more background and then the city's analysis of the appeal. The Anton Development submitted a residential design review application and a lot line adjustment and lot merger applications on May 15, 2019. Since then, the city has sent Anton a series of letters indicating it had not provided all the required materials for this application. Those letters, which are included in the staff report, as attachments document the list of requirements for the application submittal, including the requirement to rezone to plan development zoning as required by the city's general plan. Anton provided either resubmittals of its applications to address the missing information or letters claiming its application was, quote, deemed complete, unquote, on January 1, 2020 pursuant to Senate Bill 330 provisions. And the city cannot send those incomplete letters or request additional information. On July 16, 2020, the city issued a sixth incompleteness letter and an amended sixth incompleteness letter on August 11, 2020. I'll provide a summary of the appeal, which was filed by Anton on October 15, specifically appealing the city's determination that the application is incomplete for processing purposes as documented by the city in that sixth incompleteness letter and the amended sixth incompleteness letter that I mentioned previously. And the appeal raises two issues that the staff report analyzes in more detail and I'll cover in this presentation as well. Question number one is whether rezoning is required for the project and question number two, whether this application is complete. This appeal was filed pursuant to the government code section 65943C, which is referred to as the State Permit Streamlining Act. City council review tonight, I'll emphasize, as the city attorney did, starting is limited only to review of the application's appeal of the city's completeness letters. No decision is being made regarding the project or any of the requested entitlements tonight. So another overview of the appeal in a little more detail is that the appeal asserts the city cannot legally require the project to be rezoned to a planned development designation as the city has asserted. The appeal contends that once the preliminary application was, quote, deemed complete, unquote, on January 1, 2020, then the city could no longer request additional information to complete the planning application. Anton challenges the city's authority to issue any incompleteness letter after the date it asserts its preliminary application became effective, regardless of whether or not it required this rezoning. So now I'll cover the project background and information. There was an application that was submitted originally in June 2017. That was for a planned development permit and rezoning application to plan development. That project had a 152-room hotel and additional commercial space and 218 residential apartments. That application was subsequently withdrawn by Anton. And in May 2019, they submitted, what I'll refer to as the current application for a 384-unit apartment complex with 5% affordable units at the very low income levels. This revised application contained no hotel. There was no PD permit submitted or rezoning application to plan development. And those 5% affordable units correlate with a density bonus request with two requests for waivers from city development standards. So this is the project site oriented El Camino Real on the south. And what I want to show you here is that there's three parcels and three owners as shown here. And there's also split zoning on the property, which you'll see here, the front of the site, which I've highlighted in a in a red box, has commercial zoning and commercial general plan designation that extends about 115 feet in depth. And then the rear of the property going to the east has an R3 zoning and a high-density residential general plan. This shows the current proposed application, which again includes the residential component with 384 units. And as I mentioned, there was an application for a lot line adjustment and lot merger for those three existing parcels. And this shows the residential site area, which is on the eastern portion, which would total 5.5 acres and a vacant site, which is not proposed for any any development as part of this application, and that would be 1.2 acres. And again, in total, there's 384 rental units and at 69 units per acre density. This shows the city's zoning and land use designations, and I apologize that this this site is now flipped with El Camino Real towards the top and the rest of the site and the row retracts to the south or bottom of your slide as you see here. So what this shows clearly is that the zoning map has designated, again, that portion along El Camino Real as commercial and the rear of the site is R3, multiple family. And again, in the general plan map, you also have that consistent split approach, which splits existing parcels, two parcels. And here you have the general commercial land use along El Camino Real and the high-density residential land use along the rear portion. So the city density standards and rezoning policies are in the zoning in the general plan. And in the zoning code, there is a requirement for a density limit and a 1,000 square foot per unit minimum, which equates to 43.56 dwelling units per acre. The general plan land use element has a policy, LU 1.2, residential densities related to density, which states clearly that, quote, "The high end of the range is achievable under general plan policies when and under a subsection, the site has a planned development zoning designation." The land use policy 3.3, which specifies the land use classification definitions in more detail, clearly states that high-density residential allows for residential development at a density of up to 80 units per acre. This density is usually associated with multifamily structures, apartments and condominiums of 40 units per acre, but the highest density is associated with buildings up to six stories. And I'll touch briefly on the city's communication on this item as it's critical. The city has informed Anton since 2017, when that original application was filed, that the proposed density sought by the applicant can be obtained in compliance with the city's general plan through the process of a PD zoning amendment and approval of the associated PD permit. The general plan and the Millbrae Municipal Zoning Code policy documents provide a clear process describing how applicants may achieve a range of housing types and densities and heights up to the maximum of 80 units per acre. The city has consistently applied this requirement in the past. For example, at 151 El Camino Real, there was a project approved a similar density of 65 units per acre under the PD zoning and 88 South Broadway at 46 units per acre with the PD zoning. And as the city attorney mentioned, the city has approved many large housing projects, including 906 units in the city's TOD zone with 400 units under construction right now on Bart property of the transit station. As was mentioned in the staff report, the city has received an advisory letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development. This examined the applicable density standards of the general plan and zoning ordinance. Their advisory letter concluded that the requirement for PD zoning is not an, quote, "objective," unquote, standard as defined by the Housing Accountability Act, based on preferatory language regarding a, quote, "starting point," unquote, and because there's no definition of, quote, "high end of the range," unquote. Consequently, HCD's advisory letter concluded that the requirement to rezonate PD could not be required for this project to obtain the requested density since only objective standards may be applied. Further, HCD noted in this advisory letter that under state density bonus law, if the maximum density allowed by the zoning is inconsistent with the maximum density allowed by the general plan, the site may be developed at the maximum general plan density. HCD did not reach an advisory conclusion whether the zoning and general plan densities were inconsistent, but instead concluded that the density limit in the zoning ordinance was not a density limit, but a, quote, "development standard," unquote, and so may be waived under density bonus law. So that's a summary of the existing project and some background information. Now I'll step through the city appeal responses, which are documented in the staff report. So the city's response to the appellant's issue raised regarding those housing and community development department letters are that the city staff does not agree with their advisory view that the policies in the general plan, LU 1.2, is, quote, "subjective," unquote. As I mentioned, the city has consistently applied that policy to require planned development zoning for projects designated as high-density residential that exceeds the maximum R3-based density of 43.56 units per acre or the 1,000 square foot of lottery per unit. And we are not refusing to process this application. The desired density can be achieved by applying the PD zoning to the site. Also, in response to that letter, the city rejects HCD's advisory assertion that the R3 zone does not explicitly state a maximum allowable density. This is incorrect. Our municipal code, section 10.05.0820E, is a density limit that states clearly a maximum allowable density, as you see here, which I've stated before. It's 1,000 square foot per unit. This is an objective standard. The project does not meet it. And it's clearly labeled as a density limit, as you see here in the zoning code. Although HCD suggests and the applicant has applied for a waiver of this requirement, waivers are not allowed for density limits, and therefore we assert a rezoning is necessary to modify this density limit. The appeal raised the issue about the consistency between the general plan and zoning as state density bonus laws provides that if the maximum density allowed by the zoning and the general plan are inconsistent, then the general plan density will become the base density. We maintain that our general plan and zoning are not inconsistent. And the general plan provides a mechanism to achieve the applicant's desired density, as I stated, through the plan development rezoning. I'll cover the subject of the lot line adjustment, which is an item important to this application because that proposed lot line adjustment appears to require a rezoning and a general plan amendment to be approved because it would be located in two different zoning districts and general plan land use designation, as I showed you on the map. The municipal code, section 10.05.0330, states that if the two different zones split a lot, the lot is deemed to be located within the more restrictive zoning district, which in this case is the R3 zone, as documented in attachment to the staff report. And that R3 zoning is inconsistent with the general plan designation of general commercial, as the R3 zoning does not allow for the full range of commercial, retail commercial uses intended for general commercial sites. Further, changing the zoning category to R3 through the lot line adjustment would lessen the intensity of development allowed here by reducing the allowed residential density. It is unlimited density in the C-zone. The R3 zoning district also has increased setbacks, reduced lot coverage, and generally provides more restrictive zoning as documented in the staff report. Therefore, we assert this would violate the provisions of the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, which is government code 66300. And finally, a rezoning of that entire 1.2-acre lot to C or commercial and a general plan amendment to expand the area designated for commercial use would be required to conform with state law. As I mentioned previously, there was a preliminary application that has been asserted to be filed. And the Housing Accountability Act defines both, quote, "deemed complete," unquote, and "determined to be complete," quote, in government code 65589. Essentially, what that specifies is that deemed complete means that a preliminary application has been submitted, whereas determined to be complete is different. It means it has been found to be complete under the Permit Streamlining Act. Having the project deemed complete by submitting a preliminary application does not mean that it has submitted all items required by the city and has been, quote, "determined to be complete," unquote, under the Permit Streamlining Act. So therefore, if the project were to be subject to the Permit Streamlining Act, the city may review it under the Permit Streamlining Act and request needed information. In addition to the need to apply for the rezoning or general plan amendment, in each of these incomplete letters that the city has consistently stated that the Transportation Demand and Management Program and other comments by the city's traffic and transportation consultant, traffic patterns have been inadequately addressed in each resubmittal. And additionally, and therefore, the application has been determined to be incomplete to this day. Last, the applicability of the Permit Streamlining Act is relevant to this appeal because the application requires a rezoning and a general plan amendment. The application is not a, quote, "development project," unquote, subject to the Permit Streamlining Act. And no determination of application completeness is needed here. Legislative acts, including rezonings, general plan amendments, are not development projects as defined by that Permit Streamlining Act, and so are not subject to its requirement. In addition, lot line adjustment applications and lot mergers, as they are ministerial applications, are also exempt from the Permit Streamlining Act. If the city finds that the application requires a rezoning or a general plan amendment, the city will find that the Permit Streamlining Act is not applicable to the project. And the city then does not need to make a determination whether the application was complete or incomplete. The city did provide incomplete letters, as documented in the staff report, as a courtesy to Anton to help move the project forward. And these comment letters were provided to assist the developer in processing the subject application. Technically, the city is not required to send completeness letters when reviewing a project that requires a legislative approval, such as a general plan or zoning amendment or permits for ministerial projects, such as the lot line adjustments and parcel mergers. And as such, the Permit Streamlining Act is not applicable to this project, and therefore, the application does not need to be determined to be complete or incomplete. So in conclusion about the analysis about the required rezoning, the city asserts that the current application does not include the required planned development zoning district amendment and planned development permit pursuant to the city's general plan that is required to obtain the higher density of 69 units per acre. The project, therefore, will not be consistent with the general plan and zoning if it does not include the application for the planned development rezoning. The city has consistently applied this requirement in the past, as I mentioned, at other projects, and we have successfully approved those projects. And this is not a new requirement, the city that the city is attempting to apply to the project, but rather requirement that was in place when the preliminary application was submitted. So in conclusion, the staff's recommendation to the city council for tonight's action is to deny the appeal for the 1100 El Camino Real Residential Development Project on the basis, as I've documented in this report and the staff report, that the project requires a rezoning and a general plan amendment, and therefore, the Permit Streamlining Act does not apply. And also a reminder, as I've mentioned, the city council review tonight is limited only to review of this appeal of the city's completeness, and no decision is being made regarding the project or any of the requested entitlements. And that concludes my staff report. I'm available to answer any questions, along with the city attorney and city manager.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Okay, I think at this point, we will now go to the appellant. Mr. Conran, do we need to open a public hearing?
Yes, that would be advisable.
Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. And now go to the appellant. I believe we have Mr. Davidson here from Anton Development.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Halliburton, Vice Mayor Schneider, and members of the city council. My name is Andy Davidson. I'm a managing partner with Anton Devco. Before we get going, I just want to reiterate my gratitude for your leadership, especially during the course of this last year, as we fight our way through the darkness that's been cast upon us by COVID-19. While it is good to see While it is good to see you all tonight, I do wish the circumstances were somewhat different. And being as we've recently met in our last study session, I will not go through all the project details with you again. But we do have the plans handy if you guys have any questions that you want to go over. Overall, I think we all agree the project is of high quality and provides three hundred and eighty four wonderful homes for Millbrae residents. The biggest comment we heard during the study session a couple of months ago circled around the question of financial impact to the city. I definitely respect. And appreciate your concern on that matter. On to answer those questions, we hired Economic Planning Systems, a highly qualified economic consultant to analyze the residential project by itself. As a standalone project, and then again with the addition of the future hotel. This was an effort to respond to the concerns that this project will somehow bankrupt the city, which I assure you is not the case. The findings of the report was that the residential project alone will be a net positive to the city in the amount of over three hundred thousand dollars per year. And once we build the hotel, which we still plan to do. The net positive amount to the city will be over two million dollars a year. We've circulated this report to you all. And I hope you've had a chance to review it. But sorry, motion motion sensor lights here in the office. But I do understand if you haven't had that opportunity. We do have EPS standing by tonight to answer any questions you might have. Also, there's been much discussion about the loss of the T O T. The El Rancho currently contributes to the city budget. This discussion started with the city back in twenty seventeen when the El Rancho, a rapidly deteriorating hotel, was catching a windfall from a robust economy. That is no longer the case. Three years later of ongoing deterioration, the El Rancho is victim to the economic impacts of COVID nineteen. The buildings have surpassed their useful life, and the business has burned through all its reserves. No matter what happens on this site, the hotel will not generate any revenue for the city going forward. This is not our fault. This is a deadly combination of an old building and a historic pandemic. I want to work together to make sure we do not let this site become a burden for your frontline workers. And before I turn this over to our legal counsel to go into all the legal discussions that we're here to really talk about tonight, there's a couple of issues that I'd like to address on a personal level. That we at Anton find pretty important. The staff report, as before you denied, the previous staff reports with the study sessions and some of the statements made by staff in those sessions have mixed characterized two important items about us. Number one, how we've handled our prior applications. And number two, our commitment to the hotel. For number one. The staff report tonight and study sessions have made it sound like we submitted and withdrew applications without reason. And irresponsibly. That is not the case. In twenty seventeen, after submitting an application for residential project, we tried to be responsive to the city's desire for a hotel. So we read withdrew and resubmitted for a plan development. For a hotel and a residential project. In that time, we actually secured a contract with a major hotel flag. We were ready to deliver exactly what the city wanted. We waited for over a year for formal feedback from the city. We begged for a planning commission study session. We did not get either. Due to the lost time, we were unable to meet our contractual obligations with the hotel and lost the Hilton as our committed hotel brand. From that experience, it was abundantly clear to us that we would not be able to secure a hotel until the site was business ready. We've all discussed this before. Our hotel partner has been with us in various meetings and discussed this very thing. We will not be able to attract a quality brand until the site is entitled. Those are the facts. The hotel market, as you know, is volatile and uncertain just by nature. This has only been exaggerated by COVID nineteen, and due to those crushing impacts of COVID nineteen. The hotel cannot financially be built on its own. It is critical that the residential project begins and builds the hotel rep infrastructure with the residential projects infrastructure. We've explained this situation repeatedly to the city manager and staff, and for some reason it continues to be ignored. As it is right now, the hard truth is that there will be no new hotel without the residential. And. More so, the existing hotel is a short period of time away from closing its doors completely. All of this is outside of Anton's control. With all that said, and circling back to the comments about Anton withdrawing and resubmiting applications, we were forced. To make the difficult decision in twenty nineteen to split the residential from the hotel. And resubmit under the protections of the recent housing laws designed to streamline housing. We, and I personally, wholeheartedly know we have acted professionally and in good faith throughout this process. We take pride in our good faith approach. Our door has always been open to the city and the county during this pandemic. As Mr. Williams can testify, aside from our application, we have been here to help out in any way we can with requests in regard to homelessness. Displaced residents or anything we can do to help the city, our partner. Navigate through this last year. As for item number two, we are and we have been committed to building a hotel. We do feel that when travel resumes in the post COVID world, there will be demand for a hotel. Especially on this site. Especially with its proximity to SFO. The site is being configured and planned to accommodate the hotel. We are paying for the sequel analysis to include the hotel. We have a hotel partner, ready, willing, and able to secure a new hotel flag when the time is right. We even offered a voluntary payment of over a million dollars to cover the temporary loss of T O T to the city. Again, I don't know why these things have been overlooked. Honestly, it's a bit insulting to be ignored and discounted at every turn. We pride ourselves in being good partners, and that's our intentions here. And it has been our intention since twenty sixteen when we started this journey with Mr. John Williams, John Wilms and his family. In the past, I've ignored these comments and tried to focus on the merits of this project. But at this point, under these circumstances, I felt I owed it to myself and most importantly to my team to set the record straight tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions of how we got where we got or about the project or the future hotel or anything else. But I want to say that we at Anton are extremely proud of this project, and again, I ask for your support tonight. So we can move forward with processing the design review application. The environmental document and take the next steps to deliver this much needed housing. Even with the economic uncertainty we face today, we remain eager to make this significant investment in the community of Millbrae, Millbrae. I thank you for listening. I thank you for your leadership. I ask for your support. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tamsin Plume of Holland and Knight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Tamsin Plume. I'm a partner with the law firm of Holland and Knight. You may hear my children in the background, and I apologize in advance if that happens. I have practiced land use law for twenty two years, and I'm part of a land use team with decades of land use experience. We have a robust practice in the area of state housing law enforcement in particular. I am here tonight with my colleague Dan Gollub, who handles many of our firms' housing enforcement litigation matters. We will only have a few minutes. So this will move quickly and not be comprehensive, and I apologize if we run over a few minutes. I hope you will accommodate us. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have after the presentation. I will start. I'm going to share my screen now. And I'm going to do two things at once, which is always very dangerous. Are folks able to see my screen? Can someone nod at me? Yes, great. I will start with a very short recap of the project. The current applications on file with the city and a few key points about the project's process to date, and I will have to disagree a few times with Ms. Smith. We will address what is specifically being asked of the council tonight by Anton if you do approve and by staff if you deny. Finally, Dan, if we have time, and I hope we do, Dan will summarize the recent housing case law. In the event we run out of time before he can present, suffice it to say, the cases favor housing. We will also submit this. We did also submit this information about the cases to you and your legal counsel, and hopefully you've had a chance to review it. You might not have, but perhaps you will after. I have more detailed summaries of the state housing law provisions themselves, the general plan and zoning consistency language. If questions come up, but I suspect we will run out of time. So to recap, you are all familiar with the project from the study session and Ms. Smith's presentation. But in a quick reminder, the project is one hundred percent multifamily residential in a designated priority development area. And transit priority area. The hotel is not part of the applications and not under consideration tonight, exactly as Ms. Smith said. We were surprised to see the new and novel argument in the staff report and presented tonight in great detail. About the proposed lot line adjustment and lot merger, which is configured the way it is. Only to help facilitate the future hotel, not the residential project. As you will see on the slide. The residential project is entirely located in the high density residential general plan designation and R three zone. This boundary can easily be adjusted if the city prefers that it be processed as part of a future, the future hotel application process. This is a red herring for the residential project. In May two thousand nineteen, the project submitted, as Ms. Smith said, the project submitted design applications for. Design review, administrative lot merger, lot line adjustment, and sequel review. These are all. Excuse me, at the time, the application included detailed information, very detailed, voluminous. Information about the project's consistency with the general plan, zoning, and eligibility under recent amended state housing laws. It also, and this is very important, included from the beginning, all the information the city requires on its published. Application forms and checklist. As required by the permit streamlining act, and this is a nuance and an important item that Ms. Darcy, Ms. Smith, excuse me, I want to call you Darcy because I've talked to you so many times in the past about Ms. Smith. Addressed, but I think it needs some more nuance for what we're actually doing here and what's being considered tonight. The applications that we have on file currently that are with the city are for designer view, lot line adjustment, and sequel review. Designer view and is a adjudicative decision. It means the city is making a decision and being asked by the applicant. To make a decision about consistency with the general plan and zoning. We are not submitting, we had, and we have not submitted an application to amend them. That would be a legislative application. Moving on briefly to the history. I recognize this slide you see is too complicated to read. I do not recommend you focus on it over much. You might go blind. The point of the slide is to illustrate just how long and how many steps have occurred since May two thousand nineteen, and just to point out a few key events. Since Ms. Smith described the chronology, I will just address the highlights. The city has issued eight total incompleteness letters. Those are indicated in red on the. Busy slide, often with new and changing requirements, exactly the type of behavior that end. That results in delays and increased costs for housing and exactly what the housing laws have been recently amended to address and limit. As Ms. Smith also noted, in December two thousand nineteen, in light of the passage of SB three thirty, the Housing Crisis Act of two thousand nineteen. Anton did submit the preliminary application checklist that locked in the land use regulations, development standards, and fees. In effect as of January one, twenty twenty, when the law went into effect. The city has never addressed or contested this submittal despite numerous written notices and reminders of this being filed. It is important to note, just a key. Thing that happened during our process that was overlooked in the staff report and in the presentation. That the fifth incompleteness letter and the planning commission study session in May. And the sixth incompleteness letter in June removed entirely the man for plan development rezoning. This requirement was reinserted with no warning or communication from the city staff despite ongoing dialogue. In the amended sixth incompleteness letter sent out of the blue on August eleventh, nearly three months after Anton's most recent submittal. While Ms. Smith says that we, the city doesn't owe us. A response, I, this was disappointing to the team. What is also surprising. Is that, you know, we did work very hard with the team to try to resolve issues. For several months, in fact, and on October fifteenth, the city sent an additional. Update letter that still included the demand for rezoning. Which we disagree with. Anton was left with no option but to file this appeal, which brings us to tonight and the staff startling new recommendation, which is to deny the appeal based on. On the basis, the project requires a rezoning and general plan amendment, and therefore the permit streamlining act does not apply. In the nearly two years of processing, this is the first time this argument has been made. Well, several of the city's many letters were sent more than thirty days after the applicant's submittal. They were clearly sent pursuant to. And assuming the applicability, because it's true, of the permit streamlining act, because the applications on file with the city are adjudicative in nature, not legislative. The staff report only points to cases where the applicant actually applied for legislative approval. The permit streamlining act definitively applies to the project's pending adjudicative application. I would suggest you ask your legal counsel to point to any case that would support this novel theory. I do not think they will be able to identify one. Staff is asking to ignore the actual history and risk violation of the state housing laws rather than just bringing this project forward to hearing and decision by the city. It's important to be clear about what we are asking for here and what granting the appeal or denying the appeal means for the city and the project. To grant the appeal tonight that we're asking for is to answer really one primary and simple question. Despite all the fluff and must in the staff report and the presentation. There is one primary and simple question at hand. Has Anton submitted all the basic necessary information required on the city's published checklist under the permit streamlining act? Section that we're appealing tonight, and the answer is yes. The city staff report does not identify or argue that Anton has not submitted all the information on the city's published checklist under the applicable provisions of the permit streamlining act. It does not mean, as Ms. Smith noted, whatever the city asks for for a project. There are often things that are asked for from the city to process a project, but it's different than accepting a complete application and moving forward in the process rather than just rejecting it. Any additional information can easily be addressed and always is through conditions of approval and typical processes and sharing of information for hearing. Granting the appeal will allow this project to process, excuse me, granting the appeal will allow the project to proceed the hearing where the city itself can make final determinations. Within your authority of consistency with the state housing laws and the city land use. Regulations. To deny the appeal tonight and agree with staff's recommendation is a de facto denial. And violates the state housing laws and leaves Anton no option but to file litigation, which we a hundred percent would love to avoid. City staff is forcing you to answer a question that is not ripe or relevant to the current application. Can and should the city refuse to process the application and require? The applicant to submit an application for rezoning to plan development, and the answer is no for three simple reasons. First, the city cannot dictate what applications an applicant submits, although it can process them and bring them to hearing and decision. Including denial. Second, completeness of an application for processing a decision is not intended to be a high or a possible bar. And incompleteness determinations are not intended to be used as a process to drag a project out endlessly. This is focused only on whether Anton submitted all the information on the city's published checklist. And finally, under the state housing laws, the simply can, the city simply cannot require rezoning in this case. It's equally important to be clear about what our appeal is not asking for tonight. As Ms. Smith noted, we are not asking for approval. The appeal relates to the completeness of the application, not approval of the project. We are not stating the city cannot request additional information for processing. As I said before. It's typical to respond to requests for information after a complete application has been accepted for processing. We're also not saying that the city cannot apply standard and appropriate conditions of approval or mitigation measures pursuant to C plus. The SKI is under review, and any appropriate mitigation member measures allowed under SEQUA can be applied to the project. As well as typical conditions of approval. For example, a TDM program or SIGN program can easily and often are addressed through conditions of approval. Any open traffic issues or questions can be addressed through the sequel process. It is not surprising that we differ fundamentally with staff and interpretation of general plan policy one point two. As we have said consistently also in all of our correspondence since May two thousand nineteen. General plan land use policy one point two is not objective. City staff entirely hangs its hat on general plan policy one point two, written in nineteen ninety eight, twenty two years ago, and ironically the year I became an attorney. I have gray hair now. This policy and the general plan were not written with the state housing laws in mind. The city is processing a general plan update, which I'm sure will be prepared with the housing laws clearly in mind, but it's not adopted yet. As you can see from the highlighted portion of LU of Landy's policy one point two, the introduction to the list that's referenced for the requirement for PD zoning. Clearly states it's a form of guidance and a starting point for establishing residential density. This is the definition of I'll know it when I see it and the subjective discretion, not an objective standard consistent with the housing laws. It is important to note also that SB one six seven adopted in two thousand eighteen amended the Housing Accountability Act, one of the key housing laws we're looking at. To make it clear that whether a project is consistent or not with an objective development standard is not left to the discretion and the interpretation of a local jurisdiction. As it always has been for my entire career up until recent amendments in the housing laws, but to a reasonable person standard. To a reasonable person, I think, and I think a judge, if asked, this policy is not objective as a whole, and the project is consistent with the general plan and R three zone. It's not surprising that the city applied this previously to projects. This change in the housing law only went into effect on January first, two thousand nineteen, and most people frankly don't know about it. We have more than a reasonable person to rely on and our and our own opinions as Ms. Smith referred to. In February twenty twenty, HCD did, this is the agency responsible for interpreting and enforcing the state's housing laws. They reviewed our project application, our specific questions in depth for many months with consultation with the Department of Justice. And concluded. with consultation with the Department of Justice, and concluded, answered two simple questions were both at issue tonight. The project is eligible for the state density bonus law, including waiver of the development standards for height and lot area. The city's own zoning code defines the lot area under the heading and list of development standards. It is a development standard that limits density, and that is the entire point of the state density bonus law. Second, the city cannot require rezoning without risking violation of the state housing laws. And although it's not included in your staff report, HCD, that I saw, is voluminous. HCD also submitted a support letter with a copy of this technical advisory to the city on November 12, 2020. With that, I will turn it over to my colleague, Dan Golub. And I'll run the staff, I'll run the slides for you, Dan.
Oh, I think, maybe I'm running the slides.
There you go. It's up. The recent housing law case is up. I believe, Andy, can you nod at me if the housing law slid it up? Great.
Fantastic.
Go ahead.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Tamsin. I'm just ending the show here tonight, but thank you very much for having me, council members. I just want to be clear that Anton would, of course, be deeply disappointed to be litigating on this case and very much wants to avoid that. I've been asked to do a quick presentation because I am a housing land use litigator with the firm. I litigate on all sides. I represent public agencies and cities. I also represent developers, and I represent them on both the plaintiff and defendant side of litigation. As the staff report notes, an incomplete application cannot move forward to the next step of review and action. So to us, we think it's quite plain that if the council decision is to stop the project here and not let the application proceed at all, it's clearly tantamount to a denial of the application. And in many recent cases, there's been quite a number of decisions in which public agencies have been found to have violated these important state housing laws. I happen to have litigated a couple of those on this list, and they continue to come down as recently as October 10, 2020. I have to say, as someone who does represent public agencies, cities generally have not fared well in these types of challenges. I also wanted to address one point, which is that there's been a number of references to the Department of Housing and Community Development as having an advisory opinion. I do want to be clear, HCD has delegated authority under state law as the primary responsibility for development and implementation of housing policy. That's a quote from Health and Safety Code, Section 50152. That is a very powerful grant of authority. It's our experience, the courts are largely very deferential to HCD in the implementation of these state housing laws. And again, I do want to make it very clear in the record, there is a letter from HCD in this in which they say that denying this application, refusing to let it out of completeness, and demanding that a plan development zoning be adopted would violate the Housing Accountability Act and the State Density Bonus Law. Both of those statutes do, in fact, give a applicant the right to seek attorney's fees, and the HAA allows fines. We do think that there's a legal liability that the city would face for denying the application. We don't think it's just our opinion. The Department of Housing and Community Development feels the same way. The last thing I wanted to say is, the only decision the council could make that sends us down that road is to deny the appeal. If this council grants the appeal, the only thing that happens is the application moves forward. It isn't the approval of the project. It isn't the end of the discussion about whether the project can lawfully be denied or conditioned. All of those questions remain alive, and all of the council's options remain available to it, consistent with state housing law. It's only, the only choice that could end the discussion and say that this application is never going to proceed to the council at all is to deny the appeal. It's our contention that we think that under state housing laws, as well as a matter of fundamental fairness, this application is complete for consideration, and that's all we're saying today. Whether you in the end agree that it ought to be approved or denied is another question. What kind of conditions might be placed on it is another question, but it's complete. It's subject to the Permit Streamlining Act because it's an adjudicative approval, and there is no contention in the staff report that any public checklist items were left out of any of the application's submittals. It's a very straightforward case of a complete application. It doesn't foreclose the council's future options completely to let it go forward. The only thing that forecloses options is to deny the appeal, and we respectfully hope that you do not do that today. I think I'll turn it back to Tamsin and available for any questions.
Thank you for allowing us to finish our presentation. I'm going to stop the share. We do have some slides on deck if there are questions about particular provisions of the state housing laws, but I'll stop share now and turn it back over to the city team.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Plin. Okay, let's go to, how would the council like to proceed at this point? We can go to public comment. I don't know if our legal counsel has any comments they would like to bring up. Mr. Conran?
Yeah, one thing I want to emphasize, appreciate the applicant providing us some additional information. I just want to note, the financial issues relating to this project are not part of the consideration tonight. They're really not relevant to what the council is deciding, so I just want to make that clear. You know, certainly the applicants were able to submit any information that feels is appropriate, but it's really not part of the consideration tonight. I do want to note that the city has special counsel in this matter, Barbara Kouts and Gabrielle Jensen from the law firm of Goldfarb and Lippman. I don't know, Barbara, if you want to make a discussion, make a presentation now or wait for the public comment?
I mean, I think the only, I think the staff report more or less responded to most of the assertions that were made by Anton's legal counsel. I think we would just add that approval of the, or denial of the appeal would not mean that the project is denied and that will never be heard. The project, the city will still continue to proceed with processing the application, even if the appeal is denied. I think that's the only thing we wanted to add.
Yeah, if I may also add to that, you know, to pick up on Ms. Counsel's comments, the city's not refusing to process Anton's project here, so we're not refusing to process their application.
Yeah, it's a good point, Mr. Williams. I just say, we specifically disagree with the assertion in Anton's presentation that this is a de facto denial. You may be trying to position that for some, some effect, but that is really not the case here. We will continue to process it. We have the SECA process going on right now, so the process is underway and it will continue. You know, it's unfortunate that you felt the need to submit an appeal at this time. There are some questions regarding the submittals. The state housing laws are not clear. I think some of the assertions in the materials you've submitted to the city were not, not true, not, not supported by law. So, you know, there's, there's been some back and forth, there probably needed to be more, but unfortunately, this appeal, you felt this appeal needed to be submitted. But the city is certainly willing to continue discussing this matter. If you ultimately decide that you need to bring this to a vote, a yea or nay vote on your application, we can arrange for that. Just want to make that clear. This is not, this is not a denial, absolutely specifically stating that. So with that, perhaps we should proceed to public comment.
Okay.
I would agree.
Let's go ahead. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Let's go ahead to public comment now. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. There is also, if you're phoning in with it starred nine through Zoom, and just again to clarify, at this time, the merits of the project are not being considered, not being analyzed by the council. The project will not be approved or denied at this time. It is merely a question of whether the project is complete, the application is complete or not. So with that, we will go to public comment, and let's start with Marge Colopetro, former Ms. Colopetro, you're muted. Ms. Tran, can you unmute the speaker, please? Okay, Ms. Colopetro?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can. You have three minutes.
I hope during your earlier closed session meeting that you resolved the pending issues for the Anton proposal so that the threat of litigation will not happen. When I read the staff recommendations for you to deny the appeal, I was again stunned by the ongoing machinations. The city of Millbrae, the people of Millbrae, do not need to be dragged through a lawsuit that is a waste of time and money. We, the people, seek to have civilized partnerships between developers, the city staff, and you council members. You can be the ones who do the right thing by not allowing a lawsuit to take place. I hope each of you did your meeting preparations. As Mayor Hollibur indicated in his State of the City address, our fiscal financial position is not as strong as it should be. We can keep rob, we can't keep robbing Peter to pay Paul. We don't have the wherewithal to take on a costly court challenge, nor should you want to do so. Be cautious. Do you know what the laws say regarding the issues that are being challenged? We need to fulfill our Rena housing obligations. The Anton proposal hands us an opportunity to help with much needed housing. Stay out of the courtroom and stay in the council room, the room that gives the five of you the power to do the right thing, not for your own personal like or dislike, but for all of us whom you serve. That is your charge. Please lead for the people who have just placed their confidence in you during this recent election. Do the right thing. Move this development proposal along posthaste. It will be a win-win for the we, the people, the developer, and to the people who will have an opportunity to someday be proud to be called a Millbrae resident and have a home of their own in our beloved city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colopetro.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
The next, thank you. The next speaker is John Wilmes. Mr. Wilmes, you're on mute.
Am I there?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize for reading from a script here, but it's the best I can do. Mayor and city council and others in the meeting, as you may know, the Wilmes family owned and operated the El Rancho Inn for over 70 years. It's been an important part of Millbrae, both by its community involvement and its economic contribution. Over the years, we have accommodated actors, astronauts, politicians, movies have been filmed on the site. We have accommodated literally millions of guests. However, the age of the property has reached a time when it can no longer compete in the market. We will not survive even after the pandemic has passed. It's time to reimagine the property. I have worked with Anton Development on this project and found them to be an outstanding company. Steve Egert, Anton's founder and president, and his entire staff have worked to make this project a benefit to all involved that definitely are a community. Their Bay Area properties are of the highest quality and always well-maintained. A hotel in the site has always been part of the plan. This project will be something Millbrae will be proud of. Please approve this project. El Rancho Inn has been a wonderful part of Millbrae, but her time has come. Please let her go with dignity and not become a blight on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmes. The next speaker is Ben Libby.
Hi, counsel. Thank you for, thank you for having this special meeting to consider this project. My name is Ben Libby. I work for a nonprofit called Yimby Law. We're a 501(c)(3) that enforces state housing law through litigation. I have two main comments that I'd like to make on two sort of separate issues. We submitted two letters prior to this meeting on slightly different issues that are both important, I think. The first comment I have is that state law is pretty unambiguous on the point that general plan compliant projects don't require rezonings. I know that staff contends that this project is not general plan compliant and requires a rezoning, but I think that that argument is extremely flimsy, especially when you consider that the criteria for requiring a rezoning are almost entirely subjective. The general plan does say that the higher end of the range of densities requires a rezoning to plan development. However, it doesn't define the range, it doesn't define what the highest point of the range is, where the cutoff is, or anything of the sort. As a result, I think it's pretty clear that that standard is subjective, and understandably, it was written quite a long time ago, and so wasn't written in the current legal environment. And it's unfortunately outlived its usefulness. So this project is general plan compliant, and as such, a rezoning can't be required. It also fulfills all the design rules contained within the general plan. I know there are some quibbles between the applicant and staff, but, you know, looking at the staff report as well as the appeal letter, it seems pretty clear that those are relatively minor. And now the second comment that I would like to make, and I'll try to keep it brief, is pursuant to SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, whenever residential rental units are demolished, as will occur on this site, they need to be replaced if they are protected, if they meet certain categories. And so while that's not at issue tonight, I would encourage the city council and the planning department to be diligent in ensuring that this statute is enforced and carried out effectively and efficiently. It's relatively new statute, so it's something the cities aren't necessarily familiar with, but it's definitely something that to keep in mind as the project moves forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Libby. The next speaker is Nathan Chan.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you again, city council, for the opportunity to speak on this important matter. You know, I've spoken before this council several times about, about the need for housing in our city, so I'd like to echo the points made by former Mayor Colopetro earlier. I think this project represents a great opportunity to increase housing in Millbrae, particularly at the below-market unit, the number of below-market units on offer, to make some progress on a meeting our housing needs allocation requirements for very low-income units, which I've noticed the city has had some trouble fulfilling. I do want to emphasize, though, that there's the three Ps of solving the housing crisis, produce, preserve, and protect, and it's protect that I wanted to emphasize in my comments today. Actually, I'm echoing sort of the comments made by the previous speaker, Ben Libby. We need to, if we're going to develop, we need to ensure that we develop without displacing. And I haven't seen anything in the staff report to indicate that any outreach was done to the existing residents to determine whether they may, what income levels they have, how much they would be able to bear having to secure an additional unit of housing for themselves if their homes are demolished. And I believe with the, if there are low-income residents there, the number of units that are being built would enable the residents to return, but this is definitely something that we should, the city should undertake as a verification effort, and I haven't seen anything in the staff report or presentations to date that address this. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. Okay, seeing no other comments, public comment is now closed. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Pappan's second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Lee, a second from Councilwoman Pappan to close the public hearing. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
I'm ready.
Aye.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappin.
Hi.
Councilmember Oliva.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Vice Mayor Snyder. Can you all hear me?
I can hear you now.
Can you hear?
I can hear you now.
Yes.
I may have you.
Yes. Is it just me freezing or is everyone freezing? The computer. Okay, sorry, I'll try to do something.
Mayor Hollibur.
Hi.
Okay, public comment is closed.
Okay. Public hearing is closed.
Sorry, public hearing is closed.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, any questions or comments, uh, from the city council? The questions of staff or questions of the applicant?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if, if everyone can use the raised hand so I can, we can make sure this is, uh, orderly, but go ahead, Mr. Lee. Uh, Councilman Lee, you can begin.
Thank you. Um, so my question is, is this application consistent with all our other applications? Ms. Gray, uh, if I understand the question, have we applied the general plan on other similar development projects? Uh, and yes, we have, we, we've applied it consistently.
So basically, they're asking for an exemption or deviation from our normal application process?
I think that's a question for the applicant.
I'd like to meet with them, happy to do that. Great, uh, this is Tamsin Plumb with Holland and Knight. Uh, in terms of just the applications that have been submitted, it is our conclusion, uh, that the project is consistent with general plan zoning and we've submitted all the application forms and checklists and materials needed, uh, to obtain design review for the residential project, uh, and a lot merger, lot line adjustment, adjusted if necessary to reflect the boundary of general plan and zoning, if that's what the city prefers. The only development standards we are asking for waiver of are, uh, the height and the minimum lot area, which we've identified as waivers under the state density bonus law. We are also using the state density bonus law for our parking requirement for the project, which is a mandatory maximum established by the state density bonus law. I hope that answers your question.
Uh, it seems to me like if you don't go through the normal app, I mean, if, it seems to me that you're bypassing a lot of our, uh, our opportunities to evaluate the opportunity for more housing and, uh, and other amenities than, that makes sure that the housing doesn't become a slum of some sort, make sure that there's amenities, there's, um, up, there's, you know, the, the people living there are gonna have a good life, quality of life, and we get the amount of, uh, any opportunity to see if there's any more, uh, affordable housing we can get in that, in that location, get more, and also the opportunity to see if we can build bigger.
So I will say that the, uh, the project is consistent with the existing general plan and zoning density. The city does not have an adopted inclusionary affordable housing requirement. The project is voluntarily included, 5% very low-income units. The project design and amenities are a lot, and I'm sure Andy could go over those if you're interested, and those have been reviewed and gotten great feedback at the planning commission study session as well as the city council study session. The issues are not really the project design, as I've ever heard in any of the hearings I've been on, but really whether or not there's a planned zoning requirement, which would give the city the opportunity to apply the new impact fees that were adopted in June, which otherwise they cannot, um, and ask for a lot of things. It's actually very common for legislative uncontrolled processes to result in very expensive conditions and burdens that make this housing project financially infeasible, which is exactly what the housing laws are intended to stop.
Well, I understand. We're not talking about the back piece here. We're not talking about, we're just talking about the opportunity to evaluate the project. That's all I'm asking for.
You will have an opportunity to review the project as part of the design review. Uh, we have applied for a design review that's not come for formal hearing yet, and you also are analyzing the project under SEQA for all its impacts and mitigation measures. So there is absolutely an opportunity to review the project, um, as designed, consistent with the housing laws and the city's legislation.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
I did have a comment. Essentially, by saying that no, uh, planned development can be required, what the, uh, applicant is asserting is that the requirement in the general plan to have PD zoning at the higher end of the range isn't enforceable and that now conflicts with state law. That's essentially what the, what they're arguing.
Okay. For the opportunity, and thank you, the, uh, thank you to the applicants for coming forward and, uh, and having this discussion with them.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions from the council? Please raise your hand so we can see you. Okay, Councilwoman Pappin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, I think the city's done a fantastic, um, effort in providing housing and will continue to do so. Um, we have 10 stories down the road. I wish some of these housing advocates would help us save from high-speed rail. Uh, but at this point in time, I think that, um, the staff recommendation should be upheld. And, uh, you know, I encourage the developer to, you know, if they want to present the project, um, please do so. We are not, um, foreclosing that. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Councilwoman Pappin. Are comments or questions from council, from the city council? Okay, Councilwoman Oliva? Councilwoman Oliva?
I think that we, we have to re, we have to, uh, stay together knowing that, uh, our city has always been about housing. We, we've, we've approved many housing projects, and if you take us comparably to the rest of the peninsula, we're on the forefront. But that's not what we're voting on tonight, and that's not what's before me. Um, I've been bombarded with a lot of different opinions here tonight that is not really focused on what's on the agenda, and that's the procedure here. And if, in fact, this project was deemed approved, and I'm having a real hard time thinking that it has, because I've heard from the applicants who, I like the project, um, but I don't see anywhere where this has been approved. So before-
Sorry, it's, it's not deemed approved, deemed complete is the-
Excuse me.
Yeah.
But I have not seen, I haven't seen that, that one-time mention that, in fact, Tamsin, he, many times in your, in your, in your presentation, you said it was almost complete, it was almost approved, oh, we followed this, but it's, you know, and then we came back. So I'm having a hard time finding this, um, and for our city. Um, I don't see it deemed complete.
Would you be willing to let me respond to that?
Sure. Go ahead.
With Dan's assistance. So I do think the definition of completeness and approval and the types of completeness is very confusing for everybody, but the, what we're appealing tonight is whether or not just our basic application for design review is complete as required under the Permit Streamlining Act, which just simply means in the law, the section referenced, that we have submitted everything required on the city's published checklist and application forms. It does not mean you've approved the project. It doesn't mean you can never ask for additional information. It just means we have actually submitted an application that is accepted and being processed for an approval or denial. That's it. That really is the simple, uh, question at issue tonight, and there's all sorts of red herrings and all sorts of confusion, but the truth is, if we are forced to submit a legislative approval, which we are not required to do under the housing laws, for a planned zoning, as staff report says, we are no longer, we're waiving our rights under the Permit Streamlining Act, we're essentially waiving all of our rights under the state housing laws, and we are going into a purely discretionary process. And as Mr. Lee noted, it is common, when you're in a legislative process, to ask for conditions, more housing, additional things that will kill this project and make it infeasible. There is a reason housing is so expensive in California, and unfortunately, these ever-changing, and the reason we've gone back and forth is not because the applications have not been in good faith, responded to every request we received, it's just that the requests keep changing. It's a do-loop, it's an endless cycle of, we want this, or that, or the other thing, they change. If you actually go back and look at all the city's incompleteness letters, you will see that they ask for different things, more things, every single time we got a letter. Have we responded completely in good faith every time, saying the same thing, which is we have an application filed, bring it to process and decision. That's, that's the only question that issued tonight. Um, and if Dan wants to add anything to this, because this is the area he practices in, that would be fabulous.
But Tamsin, that doesn't answer my question about being complete.
Maybe I could do my best to address that if I could, Councilmember.
Go ahead.
The staff recommendation that the council is considering for action tonight is to find that there's no such thing as completeness review, because the application is not subject to the Permit Streamlining Act. That's the action item. To find that there is no, that the project is, should be denied, the app, the appeal should be denied, because the Permit Streamlining Act does not apply. Um, and again, that is a contention that I think we read for the first time yesterday in the history of this project. There is an important distinction between adjudicative approvals, like design review and lot line adjustments, and legislative changes. And we completely agree with staff that if we had applied for a legislative change, there would be no Permit Streamlining Act applicability. But this application is for, only for the adjudicative approvals, and it's clearly established law that the Permit Streamlining Act applies to those approvals. So that's step one. The, the proposal before you is to endorse staff's view that the Permit Streamlining Act does not apply, even though we did, in fact, seek and apply for an adjudicative approval. The second question, which I think goes more directly to what you're saying, Councilmember, is what is our evidence that we're complete? Well, we think we are subject to the Permit Streamlining Act, because the law is clear that an adjudicative approval is subject to the Permit Streamlining Act. A permit streamlining act application is complete when you submit the material and the city, all the city material that is on the city's public checklist for the application it issued, the residential design sta-, uh, design review and the two lot line approvals. We submitted all of that material, and I don't believe that staff has identified yet material that was on a public checklist, that was on one of the forms or the city's public checklist that we did not submit. So there's two steps here. First, you gotta decide whether you agree with staff, who is telling you the Permit Streamlining Act doesn't apply at all, which I don't think any case has ever endorsed, that you could say that the Permit Streamlining Act doesn't apply to an application that seeks an administrative approval. And then second, is there any evidence that there's anything on a city-published checklist that we didn't submit? Um, that's our contention as to why we're complete. We think it's a straightforward application of Government Code Section 65943, which says that's the process for determining completeness. This application is complete. It, that doesn't mean it has to be approved, just means it goes forward to the next step.
Yeah, Ms. Ray, I, I just may add to bring to the council's attention page eight of the staff report, uh, as well as the public. There are, based on the assertion that we, we assert that the density is not a qualifying waiver, so I can think that goes to the gentleman's, the gentleman's commentary. So I, I would just recommend that city council look at page eight of the staff report.
I would just add to what, uh, to what Mr. Golub and Ms. Ta-, and Ms. Plume said, that if the, uh, assuming that their theory is correct, that they've only applied for, for adjudicatory approvals and as consequence, the Permit Streamlining Act applies, from the city's viewpoint, it's incomplete because, or from the staff's recommendation, it's incomplete because, uh, because approvals are needed for, uh, a rezoning and a general plan amendment in order to approve the project. Um, I know that the, that they asserted that cities could not require, you can't dictate what applicants, applications and applicant must submit, but in fact, cities do that all the time. There's checklists all the time that are posted on the website that say, if you want to get this, you know, if you want, if you want to get their project approved, you needed a design review approval. So they applied for a design review approval. Um, if you want to get a lot merger or a subdivision, you need to make this kind of an application. So saying that applicants can't be, um, the city can't dictate what applicant, what applications and applicant must submit is just, is just not correct. Now, if the city doesn't agree that a rezoning is needed, then that changes the, or a general plan amendment, then that changes the, the situation, if the council doesn't agree with that. But I don't, but, um, even looking at their, um, at their theory, if you like, of the case, uh, the city would say, the city, the staff would say that the application's incomplete because the rezoning and the general plan amendment haven't been submitted.
Mr. Mayor? Could I just be heard if I promise not to be argumentative?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Barb and I are capable, I know Barb pretty well, of, of talking, of, we're capable being quite argumentative, we're also capable of not. I actually wanted to not argue, but instead just say, at this point, the applicant, I don't want to speak for everyone on the applicant team, now we're a little puzzled. The staff report is not, with all due respect to Ms. Couch, the staff report recommendation is not what Ms. Couch just said, uh, Barb, if I can do that. The staff report recommendation is that you deny this application on the grounds that the Permit Streamlining Act doesn't apply at all. So the new idea, well, maybe it does apply, but it's being denied because we might need a zone change, that's, that's not what's on the staff report, and we tried our best to respond to what the staff report was saying.
Yeah, I mean, we, I was responding to your argument and saying that your argument fails as well. That's all. I was not changing direct to the staff recommendation.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I, I don't, I mean, I, I think that the public hearing process is over, and this was a, a question and answer period, not a, not a public continuation of the public hearing. If, if this discussion continues, I would recommend the city council consider reopening the public hearing, um, or just focusing on the questions and answers.
It's a good point. Okay. Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Snyder, I saw you had your hand up, but it looks like you've lowered it, or did you have a comment or a question?
Mayor, I see that Wayne and, and Councilwoman Pappin and Lee are there, I'd rather wait for them.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilman Lee? Councilman Lee, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I, you know, when I was doing my remodeling my house, I always, I, I do the checklist and then I changed, and then I do something to comply with the checklist, and then I find out that made the changes different, changed the specifications of the project, and then so they ask for more information, blah, blah, blah. So I'm asking staff, what is, is, you know, can you confirm to me that, that the applicant has completed the entire checklist, or he has not completed the, uh, the entire checklist?
Mr. Williams or Ms. Smith, would you like to respond to that?
Well, the, the, the request before you is, is an appeal of staff's decision to not deem the application complete because of the reasons that our legal counsel has already stated in our staff report. So I think that that is our position, um, and we feel it has merit.
Okay. All right, uh, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and to the public, the applicant and staff, I apologize. I had surgery a bit ago, I'm far away from the router, so I'm cutting in and out. Um, I, I appreciate Councilman Oliva's comments, and thank you to both the applicant and staff for the additional information. At this point, I'm with Councilwoman Pappin, uh, I support the staff recommendations. I- I want to see this project happen. And I am looking forward to staff and the applicant continuing to work forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, I mean, I tend to agree with that as well. The PD zoning requirement is something that has been consistently applied to housing developments in Millbrae, as was stated earlier in the staff report, including the Bellmore project, the ADA South Broadway project and others. And has been used to successfully help get these projects eventually approved and built. And I hope it can be an effective tool in helping to move this project along as well. It appears that Anton was aware of this requirement as the initial application did include a plan zoning, plan development zoning. It was removed at some point along the line, but it has been consistently, pretty consistently articulated by our staff. So I agree with the recommendation as well. Okay, yes, Councilman Lee.
I just also want to point out that our, our cities has a history of bending over backwards and getting these applications reviewed and through the city council pretty quick. Developers have pretty, have often commented how fast that we able to get these projects through. We had extra, we, we even had extra meetings every month to try to get these projects through. So I think that we are, we do want to help Anton get this project through, but we want to make sure the process is followed.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move the recommendation. For staff.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Go ahead, Councilman Lee.
Okay, we had a motion from Councilwoman Pappen and a second from Councilman Lee. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Are we voting to deny, or is that the motion, or do?
The motion is to deny as recommended in the staff report.
Okay, I.
Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Councilmember Oliva.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
Mayor Halliburton.
Hi.
The city council announced they deny the appeal of the city determination of planning application incompleteness for the 1100 El Comino Residential Development Project.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for work on that and hope to hear of future discussions with the applicant down the road. Okay, let's now move on to item number three. This is the discussion and appointment to city selection committee vacant positions on regional boards, commissions and agencies. And I know there are a number of positions that are up this year for the city selection committee. I've not received any, I've not seen any of the letters of interest, have not been contacted by any applicants, so I don't know who has applied. But Councilwoman Pappen, it sounded like you wanted to discuss this this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ABAG positions being sadly vacated by our colleague Wayne Lee and South City's Ridge Garberino are exceptionally important to our entire region, and they represent all 20 cities, as I do on the MTC Board, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission Board. So whatever these two positions do, or how these people act in their representation of us, will come back to MTC. And they are dealing with the RENA numbers as being proposed here. They have, there has been a problem with what MTC slash ABAG is looking at as far as viable, developable land. We need strong representation here, and we need representation that's going to look and represent all 20 cities here. I have talked to two of the four candidates, and the mayor is correct, but letters of submission are not due until tomorrow. But it is so important here. There are four candidates. Mark Nagalas from South San Francisco, Giselle Hale from Redwood City, Rick Bonilla from San Mateo, and Carlos from East Palo Alto.
Carlos Romero.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. My apologies to Carlos. These representatives, having talked to Giselle and Mark in particular, I believe they haven't, I believe they didn't understand what, I don't think any of these people really understand how big these positions are. But I do believe that they will do their best to represent us, both Mark and Giselle, to the fullest extent possible. And Millbrae, I mean, Millbrae is very significant here. We have an intermodal center. San Mateo County, 70% of our land is open space. And each and every city has different needs and wants here. We do need the housing advocates to help us with high-speed rail. But when, also with Brisbane here, we need strong representation. So as we move forward here, I would like to suggest to our representatives that we support Mr. Nagalas and Ms. Hale in this movement forward here. I have discussed previously with Mr. Bonilla certain legislative aspects like SB 50 and some other avenues. We all know that SB 50 treated San Mateo County differently than the other counties throughout, and we can't have that. Everybody wants and needs to do housing, but there should not be a double standard for any counties. And East Palo Alto is the only city within San Mateo County that has stricter rent control laws than the state of California. So although having not spoken to those two candidates, I do have grave concerns.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, about me.
Go ahead, Councilman Lee.
Even though I won't be voting, I don't think we, anyway, my recommendation is, is that I concur with Councilwoman Pappen. In my experience on, on the ABAG is that it was, you know, you're, you're, you're competing with Oakland, San Jose and San Francisco. And they're the big, they're the big heavyweights in the room. And often, it was just me and a few other board members who, who had to step up and say, hey, you know, every city's unique. And not every city's a San Francisco or San Jose and Oakland. And we need, we need strong personalities to go out there and be able to say that and consistently also work with the other cities, other representatives on the ABAG. So it's really important to have a strong personality on this, on this commission, on this, on the ABAG. So in light of that, in my experience with that, I do, I do concur with Councilwoman Pappen. That's my recommendation.
Any other comments from the council, Councilwoman Oliva? Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Schneider, I saw you had your hand up first.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, city manager and, and mayor for letting this go on the agenda. I had asked for this to go on the agenda. I have been contacted by three of the four candidates. I've talked to them. I've talked to each of them about the kind of the specific issues that seem to hit Millbrae. And would they spend the time to get to know unique problems of each city? So as Councilwoman Pappen said, they will be representing all of us. So I, I wanted to hear what everyone says and thinks. And I have, I have one more to talk to. And this was the one that I think had the main decisions. I also wanted to know, because there are other open seats, if there were any other council members who wanted one of these seats so that the work can begin to help that person get that seat.
So what is your recommendation, Councilman, or Vice Mayor Schneider?
On, on mine, I haven't, I don't have a recommendation yet. I have talked it at length with Mark Nagalas about what I think, where some division of power within the county is and how we might get better understanding from all the transportation agencies who control much of us, as well as SFPUC and PG&E. So I'm leaning towards Mark. And the other slot I haven't finished, I do know that both Carlos Ramirez and Rick Bonilla have been the, sorry, they're ABAG reps and, and are on the committees, and I have talked to.
Lost you, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, just the RENA numbers, which I think are not an adequate reflection of the land liabilities we have in Millbrae. SFO, everybody else that owns us, we're, we're not really as big as they think. So, but right now, I'm, I am leaning towards Mark Nagalas. As one.
I hope you feel better.
It's the anesthesia has been working its way through my lungs, so it's been a rough couple of days. Thank you. I'll probably shut up now.
Okay.
Interestingly enough, I was, you know, I mean, I was appointed by the president to the housing committee. And that just kind of signals the importance of San Mateo County and how we advocate for housing. Because I know how important Millbrae is, as well as how we, how we figure in the whole, whole scheme of housing on a peninsula. So I was honored to be appointed to, to that committee and to advocate for housing. And so that's, 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 you know, housing also, this not just about build, build, build. It's also about quality of life issues too. So we have to make sure that when you build, that there's, that police and fire is protected. Because the more you build, the slower the response of police and fire, unless you make sure that all the infrastructure that, that's needed to support the lives that are going to be impacted by the increase in population are also looking at. So it's a holistic approach. It's not just, oh, build, build, build. It's, it's a, it's a whole holistic approach in making sure everybody is, is taken care of.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up?
Okay. Let's go to Councilwoman Oliva, because I see your hand is up. Your hand's been up real.
Thank you. I was just saying, with the choices that we have, I mean, Giselle and Mark are both experienced with both what, what Councilmember Lee was just talking about. I mean, between Redwood City and South San Francisco, with what they've done with housing is immense. And I think that that's, that's a huge part of what we could use in, in looking at the housing element. Beyond that, I, I think that it's really important that, I mean, we are 20 cities. And being represented by somebody that is near and dear to us is very important. And I think Mark demonstrates and, and locates that position for us. So those are my two cents. But I think it's really important to, to wait till Friday to make a final decision.
Yeah. I agree. I think, you know, I think we need to know who all of the applicants are in case anybody else puts their hat in the ring. You know, I, I know all of these individuals to some extent. I'm a little concerned about both Mr. Nagalas and Ms. Hales are both fairly new council members. I think it would be good to have someone with a little bit more seasoning in this role. Although I am concerned with some of the views of state housing law that Mr. Bonilla of San Mateo has. I've served with, with Mr. Romero on a couple of committees in the past. And I believe he's been the alternate to ABAG for a while, so I think he's pretty well qualified for this position. But I'm willing to leave this to the discretion of the incoming mayor. I believe this typically is a, an advisory vote. It's not a binding vote of the council. So that, that's where I'm leaning. Okay, looks like we have a member, go ahead, Councilwoman Pappen.
Yeah, again, I expressed my concern about two of the candidates there. And I do understand the nudity of some of these candidates in this race. I have recommended to both Giselle and Mark Nagalas that they do a bus tour for ABAG representatives, so that they can learn about the 20 cities, as I did with the MTC Board, and it is very enlightening. Part of this job will also be convincing the other representatives from other counties that they cannot just simply rubber stamp legislation or guidelines that just don't fit in some jurisdiction as, as they would fit into other jurisdictions. And one point of preference too here is that the governor has clearly pointed out that we need to be really, really careful about building in high fire zones. And we have several cities to the south of us that are in those zones. Some of them can't even get homeowner's insurance. The fire danger is so bad. So education for whoever these reps are and strong representation, I think, is extremely important. So whoever the mayor is and votes, I think we really need that strong representation. Because, again, I'm responsible on MTC for representing all the 20 cities as well. And I would really hate that if ABAG came down with just some blanket, blanket regulations that are not equitable to all the cities. So that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it looks like we have a member of the public would like to speak. Nathan Chan?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to speak again to the Millbrae City Council. As you all well know, this year has been a very important year for Americans, all of us, to consider the racial injustices and equities that have been perpetuated in this country for generations. Particularly, there's growing awareness now about the history of redlining and how certain cities use exclusive zoning to keep, maintain lower populations or maintain relatively, or target high-income residents and forcing lower-income residents into redlined areas. The regional housing needs allocation is one of our best tools to begin redressing this historical inequity by making sure that every city in our, in the peninsula is wealth, is welcoming to people of all different income levels. I think it's very important that the representation on ABAG and that gets to make these decisions draws on representation from some of these historically underrepresented areas. And East Palo Alto is certainly the most obvious example of that in our area. It's a formerly redlined neighborhood, very high concentration of people of color relative to its neighbors and also lower, generally, lower income. So I would strongly advocate that we should, that you all should support putting Carlos Romero as one of San Mateo County's ABAG representatives. I think the perspective that he could bring to that body as a resident and representative of East Palo Alto would be very valuable. It's also, it also seems that North County has generally been, gotten representation on ABAG. Like, obviously, Councilmember Lee, Ridge Garberino, and of course Gina, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pappen. And so I think it would be nice to have some representation from the southern part of the county as well. So thank you for your time tonight. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chan, for those comments. Seeing no other public comment, public comment is now closed. I think it's also important to note that we do have a new council member who's coming on board in just a few days and will be on the council on December 18th, when the city selection committee makes this decision. So I think that the new council member should have some input here as well. But again, I don't know if this requires us to ask legal counsel, but I believe this is a, an advisory vote to the incoming mayor and not a binding vote in any way of the council.
Right, I believe it's their, it's their vote. So yes, you're, you're providing your opinion.
Okay. All right, is there a motion on the table? And is there any discussion about any of the other boards that have come up? Sounds like, I haven't heard any comments about any other committees.
To the mayor. It seems like, well, until we see who applies, it's likely that most of them will be applying to fill the slots that they currently have. The only other opening that I think I saw was LAFCO. And I. And I, um, I don't know enough about LAFCO, but I did want to make sure if there was anybody on Millbrae Council if interested, that we make sure that we put them forward.
Okay. Thank you, uh. Thank you for those comments. Um, and again, there's still, uh, one more day to, to apply if anybody's interested.
So do we take a vote in advance of not knowing who the actual applicants are? Or just know that everybody has said who they prefer, um, and leave it at that?
I mean, I guess that's a question again, maybe for legal counsel if a vote is even needed here or. If the, um, positions have been, opinions of the council have been stated already.
Correct. I don't think you need to vote.
Thank you, because I also, and I want to thank, sorry, through the mayor. I wanted to thank Wayne because I wanted to hear what he thought, you know, given that he's been in this role for at least two years. You know, whoever it should, you know, make sure that we all keep moving forward. So thank you, Councilman Lee, and thank you for your time on A-bag.
I've been on the, I, thank you.
Yeah, but you were in the position, you were in a different position the last couple of years, if I remember.
And, um, so we'll see tomorrow who applies, if anybody else applies. Um, I would recommend, uh, if any members of the council have opinions about these various positions to contact. Um, the incoming mayor at some point before December eighteenth, when the city selection committee meets. Okay, so with that, we will, uh, adjourn, uh, for this evening.
Council, Councilman Oliver, I'm Mayor Oliver, I'm sorry. You're not going to do any council report, only that I have two critical pieces of information. But I can do it through staff. I'll just do it that way.
Okay. Um, yeah, unless it, it wasn't planning to hold council comments, um, but. Yeah, it's something that can be provided to staff, that would be fine. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just one announcement that need to be made, the, um, the drive-in thing has been canceled, the drive-in movie's been canceled.
Yes, drive-in movie this weekend has been canceled. Yes.
And the votes have been finalized.
And yes, the, uh, the vote, um, election has been certified. So congratulations to Councilwoman Pappen, Vice Mayor Schneider and Councilman-elect Fung. Um, and we will see you all on, um, Tuesday evening, um, December eighth for the council reorganization. So thank you very much and have a good evening, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.